All right. So I'd like to call to order the May 15th meeting of the New Canaan Public School, New Canaan Board of Education. The first item on our agenda is the approval of the May 1st meetings. You have before you a copy of the minutes and if, after you've had a chance to take a look at them, if I could get a motion to approve. Penny, second. Maria, all those in favor? Okay, it's a, yes, it's a majority of those, yeah. So there's a quorum of those who are in attendance, so it's Penny, Jen, and myself, and Maria.
Majority of the quorum.
All right, so, moving on, if I could get, we're going to be reviewing and approving the agenda. Could I get a motion, motion to approve the agenda? Jen, I mean, sorry, Sherri, second. Jen, all those in favor? Okay, all right, thank you. Next item is comments from the public. To ensure the public's right to be heard, the board has set aside time during the meeting for public comments. Two minutes will be allotted to each speaker and a maximum of 15 minutes to each subject. Do I have anyone who would wish to address the board this evening? Seeing none, we'll move on to reports and recognition. The first item on our agenda is the Fred Simone Outstanding Science Leadership Award presented to Melinda Meyer and Dr. Ross Valley and the K-12 STEM Danbury Public Schools, from Danbury Public Schools.
I'll take it from here if you don't mind.
Okay.
All right, all right. It is my great pleasure to welcome Dr. Ross Valley from the Danbury Public Schools. He's been an educator for more than 25 years. He's currently the K-12 STEM Curriculum Administrator for the Danbury Public Schools, in which he oversees the K-12 math and science curriculum for the entire district. In addition to his active involvement in Danbury, he's also a member of several state science organizations, including the Connecticut Science Supervisors Association and the Connecticut Science Teachers Association, and he's the statewide science coordinator for the Presidential Award for Excellence in Mathematics and Science Teaching. Melinda has long considered Dr. Ross Valley a mentor, especially since she started her role as the K-8 Science Coordinator in 2006. He has encouraged Melinda to become involved with both nationally and at the state level, and has also apparently persuaded her to present at both of those levels. It's a great pleasure to have you here, doctor. Thank you for joining us tonight, and I think we're here to recognize and celebrate some of the great work that Melinda's been doing as well.
Thank you very much. I've had the privilege of knowing Melinda Meyer now for about 12 years, and you and I have something in common. We are pretty good at spotting talent. You have spotted the talent in Melinda Meyer. You have elevated her to positions of leadership in the New Canaan Public Schools. You've given her opportunities, and each time you've given her an opportunity, she has taken it on professionally, cheerfully, and with great pride, and she has accomplished wonderful things in her role. So the award that I bestowed upon her as, on behalf of the Connecticut Science Supervisors Association, is named after Fred Simone, and it is something that goes back about almost 40 years at this point. Fred was one of the founding members of the Connecticut Science Supervisors Association back when the fledgling organization separated from the Connecticut Science Teachers Association. And as I said, Melinda has already been given that award. Tonight, however, I am here to present an award to you, to the Board of Education of New Canaan Public Schools, and it is in recognition of your support of Melinda and of science in general. Because of you allowing her the opportunities and the time, she has absolutely thrived at a state level and indeed at a national level as well. She has been a member of the Board of the Connecticut Science Supervisors Association. She was a president for two years. She was actually president-elect for two or three years, and president for two years and past president for two years, and she continues to serve on the Board. She and I have also been facilitators with the Connecticut Science Center, and we've facilitated inquiry workshops, introduction to inquiry, and formative assessment, and classroom applications. And most recently, we were both selected to be in the Leadership Development Academy for the Next Generation Science Exemplars. And so, again, because of all that you have done to support Melinda, this award is given to you. So it reads, "The Connecticut Science Supervisors Association honors the long-term support of science education by the New Canaan Public Schools. This presentation is made in recognition of the reception of the Fred J. Simone Award for distinguished leadership and service in science education by Melinda K. Meyer, K-8 Science Coordinator, bestowed on May 3rd, 2017." So she already has her own plaque. This one is yours. Don't let her take this back to her office.
(laughter) Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Simone.
Shall we? How about a round of applause for Melinda?
Yeah. Yeah. I think we're standing ovation here. There you go. (applause)
I won't embarrass her terribly by repeating some of the things that I said in New Haven, which was that college was so stressful for her that she had to spend a year playing in the sand at the beach.
(laughter)
I'm sorry, working for the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers.
Thank you very much.
It's both an honor and a privilege to be recognized as a leader of science education in Connecticut and to represent New Canaan's strong science program. We really do have the best job in the world. We get to engage students every day in learning, making connections, and providing them with the fuel to grow into the next leaders, scientists, and engineers. Our students' excitement and energy is our caffeine in the morning. It's what keeps us going. And while we feel the pressure of our profession, we understand that the pressure we feel is because we understand just how high the stakes are. To me, this award not only represents leadership, it represents the dynamic and powerful support system and network that we have here in New Canaan, starting with you. We are benefited by serving a board that is confident in their administration and their leaders. You invest in your local talent and support the development of emerging leaders. I'm an example of your homegrown leadership. I started in New Canaan 18 years ago as an intern, and then did my student teaching, continued on as a grade eight science teacher, and now every day I'm proud to come to work as your K-8 Science Coordinator. You have created structures and processes that support the development and implementation of our rigorous programs, all of them. The Curriculum Leadership Council, the CLC, consisting of coordinators and leaders, are my cheerleaders and my most critical friends, and although I may not literally have them sitting behind me every day on my way to work or as I do my job, I know that they're here and they have my back. They're just a phone call, an email, or a text message away, and we challenge each other. We challenge our coaching skills and rely on each other to critique our programs and review our work, to ensure that our goals are reflected in the writing and the assessment of our curriculum. We are also there to make sure that we have in our lives a healthy balance between work and play, just like we tell our students.[514.12][514.12](laughter) Your support encourages our teachers to take risks and try new things. I'm happy to share that some of the teachers are here tonight to support their colleague, myself, and always stand beside me when I encourage them to take a risk and try something new. The New Canaan Board of Education creates and fosters an environment for growth through your visionary and progressive district goals. This has resulted in a dynamic STEM program and discussions of the potential for virtual and augmented reality learning platforms. I can also depend on you to always ask the challenging questions at the end of the presentations, the questions like, "What is next for our science program?" "How can we support you more?" And those words tell us that the New Canaan Board of Education isn't just satisfied with the standard. You are champions for innovation and pioneers for the programs that will engage our students in captivating phenomena, assessments designs that are relevant and authentic that hook our students, and demand instruction that pushes our students to define and solve problems. You understand that through these experiences, our students will motivate, inspire, and push our own thinking. So thank you again for the opportunity to be a leader within the district.[588.04][588.04](applause)
So, Melinda, I just wanted to say that we are very fortunate in this district to have such talented leaders and educators such as yourself. It's what has helped make this district what it is, and we look forward to supporting you in the future and all your, you know, other leaders in science. It's such an exciting time for STEM education, and I think we're all huge supporters of that. So I don't know if anyone else would like to say anything?
I just have a question. We heard that you played in the sand for a bit at one summer. Do you have plans for this summer as well?
This summer, a colleague and I received a professional learning grant to go to Iceland to study the constructive and destructive forces on Earth and how mankind has embraced and harnessed it. So we'll be leaving in August for 10 days.
Wow, exciting.
A model of lifelong learning.
Absolutely.
Wow, exciting. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Okay. All right. So, yes, please.[658.54][658.54](laughter) All right. So the next item on our agenda is our facilities update with Mr. Clark, our new facilities manager.
Sure. So I am very happy to introduce you tonight to Dan Clark. Dan has been with us since the, I guess it was the beginning of April, right? Bob left at the end of March. As you know, after an exhaustive search in many interview committees, Dan showed his talent, expertise, and skill, and I know this is the first time he's before the Board, but we've been in the midst of budget and other things as well, so we thought it would be a great opportunity now for him to come and share with, share some information with you about our planning. And of course, alongside Dan is John Perna, who is our in-house expert in just about everything, helping to keep the machines running and everything working the way it's supposed to work. So Dan and John have put this presentation together for us to look at our existing projects for this year, and also to talk a little bit about projects for next year, now that we're through this budget, the budget cycle. And also to just touch base on a few other items of interest. I know there were some questions about the energy management, and John has been spearheading that project for us from the start. And then a quick touch on SACS and the summer plans a little bit around some of the things we're doing internally. So Dan comes to us with lots of experience and certainly knowledge to help us continue moving our facilities forward and careful stewardship of the resources. So, Dan, it's all yours.
Thank you, Dr. Letzey. I'm very pleased to be here. It's a very exciting time in the New Canaan school system for a number of things. I felt the energy when I came through and went through all the buildings. I actually had the opportunity to meet Melinda and a lot of her staff already, as I've been meeting teachers going through the move plans for SACS, which I'll talk about a little bit, and I admire her team. And as far as John Perna, I was also very impressed with the facilities team that we have here, how they are stewards of the building, they're very knowledgeable. We take a lot of ownership and do a lot of things in-house because they're very interested in it and continuing to look at opportunities to improve the looks of the building and the efficiency. And I'm very, very lucky and pleased to have John Perna as the assistant manager. So I just wanted to publicly say that I'm sure he's not very comfortable with me saying that right now, but it is true, and as Dr. Letzey said, everything that he said is true. And so John and I put this presentation for you tonight just to talk about what our plans are. It's a very, it's a very faulty clicker, and, oh, there it is. It doesn't have the Yes Network on it. I'm used to seeing that for the Yankee games. So for tonight's presentation, as it says, we're going to give you an update on the existing and ongoing 2017 capital projects. We'll also give you a status report on our 2018 capital projects by school, status report on our operating budget maintenance projects. We'll also give you, and John will lead us on a study of a report of our energy conservation projects. We have a lot of really neat things happening. And then we'll give you an update on the SACS building project, again, specifically more with the move plans, because there's a lot of moves. I think to last count, we are up to over 70 classrooms that are affected in one way or the other. And of course, we have a very tight schedule with the summer, but Mr. Macedo has an excellent detailed plan and has been working on it quite a long time with the staff members. We're also working very closely with our project committee and also with ONG, so that we can coordinate all of our activities to be as efficient as possible as we close school and as we immediately take advantage of every open day in the summer to be able to get as much work done as soon as possible. So it's been, again, another great team effort in that regard. So for the update in the 2017 capital projects, we have a table here. Altogether, it was 40 projects that were approved, and we completed 27. So the 13 remaining are on the next two slides. We have East Corridor ventilation, design processes proceeding on that. East Corridor painting, that's continuation of ongoing projects, of course, painting work we try to schedule during vacations and holiday times and so forth. Same thing with East-South and the high school classroom painting. This room was actually painted over the April vacation. East Masonry, restore and repair. We need to complete the bid specifications on that just to, and every year we bring our engineer through just to refresh, to make sure that we have the masonry in the buildings inspected regularly, to make sure that we see that the work that we've done is maintaining, and if there's any new work that we have to focus on. And then the East Expansion Joint Repair, which you'll see them in the hallways anytime there's fire doors. It's usually a plate that separates one wing from the other. We call those expansion joints, and that has to do with the building settling. On the next page, we have the Districtwide Infrared Survey, which is a great program to do preventive maintenance on electrical switchgear, to make sure that if we have any problems developing there, we spot it proactively. Also, the underground storage tank, emergency maintenance, that's for repairs and testing that we need to do for our underground storage tanks. That's a state requirement. Structural engineering services, we've been using J-CJ, the architects, and they have their own in-house engineer, and they also actually subcontract out some work, again, to keep us updated on our existing conditions. And then out of that develops projects for masonry repair, for example, masonry, restore, repair hallways, classrooms in the SACS building, for example. It's something that, again, it's just an ongoing project. School security phase two, this has to do with notification systems inside the buildings. And then finally, closing out the 217 projects is the West Gym Floor, and that's where we continue to study the water infiltration from the groundwater coming up. So the next slide shows you a tool that we use as we investigate the underground piping beneath the school and adjacent to the school, and the cord that you see is actually a snake, and it has a camera head on it, so we're able to actually see inside all the piping. And it's a great technology, it's very useful for us, and it actually has a meter on it. So, for example, if there's a pipe broken or a crack or something, it actually measures out and tells us how far down the pipe, and we can use a walking stick and walk over the ground, and it communicates with the stick, so we know exactly where to dig, so we don't have to dig up the whole backyard. So just to fill you in on some of the technology that we use as we go about investigating and developing projects. So for the 2018 capital projects, district-wide, we, the first item that we'd like to do is replace our existing maintenance van. The vehicles rarely leave the site, but, so there's not a lot of miles on it, but they get a lot of wear and tear because there's constant starting and stopping, and a lot of strong wear and tear in the brakes and the drivetrains and so forth. So we'd like to have, start a program where we start to recycle and trade in some of our older vehicles. This particular one is 2004, one of our work vans, which is very important to the efficiency of our crews to be able to go through all the buildings. We also continue on with exhaust fans in the schools, improving the ventilation, removing the heat, especially as the warmer weather comes, and making sure that we have sufficient fresh air coming into the buildings. Our main electrical switchgear service, again, an ongoing, you saw that in 2017. We also have it budgeted and ready to go for 2018. We do different schools every year. Roof ladders, and I have a picture of that to show you, but we have many different levels of roofing in all the schools, and it's very difficult to bring ladders up with you if you need to escalate to the next level, so we build these in permanently. So it's a really great efficiency and safety improvement. Playground restoration, what this is about is going to the elementary schools and wherever we have the mulch and we replenish or actually replace it, we dig it out to make sure that we have the proper fall protection for all the playgrounds, and put borders on there to try to contain the mulch, because a lot of times it flies out, and so it needs to be replenished every year, that's what that is. And then we have monitoring equipment. This is where our energy management system, which allows us to communicate with the school, the boilers, and our alarm systems when we're home or at nights, evenings, weekends, holidays, and we need to continue to upgrade that and add more devices on it. So things like freezers, if in the kitchen they go down and there's a problem, we'll know about it right away as opposed to coming in on a Monday and discovering it. There's a couple of pictures of two exhaust fans that we've installed. Again, these are at SACS, so just to give you an idea what they look like. For the East School for this year, we're looking at carpet replacement, and that's actually something that's consistent across all three elementary schools. They're all, it looks like they're all probably installed at the same time, and they've all worn about the same way, too. So we're looking to select the carpet, and that'll be on our summer project list. Also, the classroom ADA sink upgrades, this has been an ongoing project where we've tried to make all of the sinks and the counters accessible in the classroom, so this particular case, it's East. We're looking to replace one of the, our domestic hot water heater. They age out over time, and they become much less efficient. So John has always specified energy-efficient equipment, so in this case, it'll be a high-efficiency electric, or, I'm sorry, propane hot water heater for the East School. Floor tile repairs, I have a slide to show you, but, you know, over time, the floors break up and carts rolling over it or just wear and tear, so we've identified an area, fewer areas that we've had to replace this year from the East. Vinyl walls and bumpers, that's when carts and trash containers, things are rolled down the corridors, they mark up the wall. The principals have asked to see if we could put wall protection on there to minimize the damage that happens just day-to-day operation of the school. And then bathroom upgrades, in this case, continuing to replace partitions in the girls' and boys' restrooms. This is, these are pictures of the ADA grab bars, which was another improvement that we've done. This happened to be at the high school, but just to continue to make all of our spaces accessible. And there's a picture of the, I believe that is the South. I could be wrong, though, but all the carpet looks the same, but that's just an idea. We're looking to replace that with floor tiles, carpet tiles, which are better for So for the South, we have carpet replacement and the classroom millwork, as I've mentioned already. We also have the masonry restoration, the chimney needs to be repainted and waterproofed. Each street, of course, the cafeteria, floor tile repairs, vinyl wall bumpers, cafeteria hallway similar to what I mentioned for the East, and then upgrade all the glass fuse panels that we have. And if you are not sure what that is, those are little round yellow glass fuses, so we have a few that, it's time for them to be replaced. And so that's a picture of one of them there that just happens to be in the South. Continuing on, there's a picture of some of the floor tile that needs to be replaced right outside the cafeteria. Again, it's a busy place, a lot of carts going through and the tables and so forth, so it's normal wear and tear, so we want to capture that and get that taken care of before it becomes too widespread. For the West, again, another domestic hot water heater. It's aging out, it's going to be replaced with high-efficiency propane. Water isolation valves, very interesting in this school, where typically, even in your own home underneath your sink, you would have water valves if there's ever maintenance that needs to be done. At the, at the West School, we have very few, so if there's a repair that needs to be done, we have to shut the water off to the whole building. So this is a project, a program that John has started to put isolation valves in the bathrooms to be able to ease maintenance. And of course, if a pipe breaks, it'd be very handy. Carpet replacement, main office, same situation in the West, and install gutter guards, that's sort of tied into our, the water problem that we have in West. We're trying to identify all sorts of areas where the water could be impeded from normal flow, and since we have a lot of trees around the building there, this will help us out, keep the gutters clear and flowing properly. And this is just one picture of the mulch, you could see how it needs to be replenished, and that's on a regular basis. For the SACS school, the 2018 capital projects include masonry repairs and repair bricks. Again, we have the structural engineer coming through to make sure that we have an updated spec. Playground replacement, we're working with the manufacturer, and then there will be input from a committee to complete the design, making sure that we have the appropriate, age-appropriate equipment for the playground equipment. Replace remaining HVAC valves, another project from Mr. Perna, to improve the efficiency of our HVAC system. This is for several classrooms in the building. Cafeteria millwork under the windows in the cafeteria, where you see the benches that go along all the windows all throughout the cafeteria. Our plan is to remove them and reset the heat back to be able to give more space for the students. It's very crowded at that side of the cafeteria when the tables are extended, and I have a picture of that. Boiler expansion tank, that'll improve the efficiency and the operation capabilities of the boilers in SACS, and then improve the general ventilation in the kitchen. That's part of the kitchen project that will be a bit rehabbed to be able to provide more efficient flow for the workers in the caf and also for the students as they go through, and that's, this is part of that project that we're looking to tackle this summer as well, by improving the ventilation and giving them their own air supply and hopefully removing some of the fans that they've had to use there, which also take up some room inside the kitchen. Picture of the SACS playground and a picture of the kitchen. Only one fan made the picture, but to the left, I think there's two or three more that are mounted on there. And again, to try to remove some of these items and open it up and make the flow more efficient for the students and the, and the staff. And then there are the benches. You can see that when the tables are open, they're extended right up against the benches, so they'll be removed and they'll be taken all the way back and made flush there along the wall, so that'll improve. Here's the expansion joints that we have. These you see throughout the school, there's approximately 16 of these where buildings meet, different wings meet together, and through normal wear and tear and building settling, 16 of them have failed and meet different levels of maintenance. Some need to have them totally removed, some just parts replaced, but this is the kind of thing, it's an ongoing maintenance thing. We hope that when we're done with this work, it'll last for years and years. That's the plan, but this is something that we're going to coordinate with all the moves that we have in SACS, because this will take a few days to a week or so each, and we want to make sure that we're coordinated well, so we're not interrupting the smooth-flow traffic or the work that needs to be done in the existing classrooms to continue on with our progress for the move-in for start of school in September. There's a picture of the roof ladders that were installed. You can see that with the different elevations, it was quite the task to be able to get equipment and tools and just people up to be able to inspect some of our fans and just inspect the roofs if we have roof leaks or other maintenance that needs to be done. So that's a really nice improvement, efficiency and safety for the staff. This is an example of some of the exterior masonry repairs we have to do, where we have some failed sidewalks, so this will be addressed this year. For the high school, we're going to be replacing the carpeting in the library. It's very worn and tired. We just need to select the carpet. Right now, they have carpet tiles in the library. We're going to go back that way. It's much more efficient to do that, and of course, we always order 5% or 10% overstock so that if there is a spill, we have plenty of spares that we could use. Also, we're going to be replacing the carpet in this, this room as well, so we just have to select the carpet. We have some flooring work to do in the kitchen. This is basically in the loading dock where a lot of the heavy pallets come in and the floor is worn, so we're going to replace that this summer. For safety purposes, we're going to connect the bus building at the high school to the emergency generator, so for communication purposes and so forth, and then their ability to operate during the middle of a power failure. We have the generator there, of course, and we're ready to roll with that project. And then continue on with ADA upgrades in all the bathrooms, and I showed you the grab bars that we've installed in the past. This is something I know that the school's very proud of, and John Perna ran this job last year, was it last year? This is the collaboration lab, and you can see the before and after pictures, and so one is complete and the other one is scheduled for this summer. There's a picture of the bus building. This is not a trick photography, they did not lose power, it was just kind of a shadowy picture. When I took the picture, this wasn't really to over, you know, dramatize this, but, but just to show you how important it is that, that they do have electricity. So in terms of the target completion date for 2017, we have these maintenance projects. They're all ready to go. Now, the West, South, and East, some of them have commonalities, like in two schools, we'd like to connect our domestic hot water pumps to the emergency, to the energy management system. Again, it's just something else that if anything ever went off during the middle of the night or in the weekend, we get notification through our phones. We're also looking to raise a transformer in the Again, it's just something else that if anything ever went off during the middle of the night or in the weekend, we get notification through our phones. We're also looking to raise a transformer in the West building. It's on the floor now, and sometimes it gets wet in there. So for safety purposes, we want to raise that up off the floor. We also have some upgrades, again, to our, the efficiency of how we operate our parking lot lighting by connecting it to our emergency management system so we can closely monitor its operation, just to make sure they're not running during the day. They're not coming on too early so that as the summer comes up, they shut down early, they come on late. It's just an efficiency improvement. So these are things that we're constantly peeling away at the onion and finding more opportunities to not only save electricity and reduce our utility costs, but it really saves the wear and tear on the equipment and extends the life, all of our capital equipment. And this is, example is about the pumps and the lights, but it really extends to how we operate our boilers, how we operate our chillers. It saves utilities and extends the life. And John's done a great job with that, John and the crew, on that. For Saks, we're upgrading the control on R25, I believe that's the cafeteria unit, John? So again, same thing, we operate it when it's needed and it doesn't operate when it's not required. Connect the alarm system into the doors. We have a sewer line that we need to repair in Room 25, and again, connecting domestic hot water pumps to the energy management system. For the high school, we have a new domestic expansion tank. Again, that's for our domestic water. Boiler number one, control upgrade, and I have some pictures to show you about those to better operate safely, more efficiently, our boiler system for number one at the high school. Again, another emergency power requirement, we want to connect the diesel pump and the Vita router onto our generator. Anyone take a guess what the Vita router is? I have no idea, I was hoping you did, because I'm new. The Vita router is the alarms, is the monitoring system that is built in and around the oil tank, so it detects leaks. So if we ever have a leak at the tank, and it's a requirement, but it's just a common sense thing, it's good to have. And it's especially important that we have it on the generator as well. Again, replace the main boiler reset panel. We're going to connect the alarm system into the doors and replace two valves that work on our cooling tower, which is for air conditioning system. And that'll help to keep that, the tower running properly so that... We haven't needed it yet, but we do have the air conditioning system now. We're going to need it this week. There's a picture of the hot water tank, the expansion tank in the high school. There's a picture on the left is the control panel that we need to upgrade, replace. And if you've never seen them before, our two boilers for the high school. And the Vita router. So I have copies of these pictures, if you'd like me to email that. You could ask other people, they knew what it is. So that's our schedule. It's a very ambitious plan, but I think that we have an excellent plan. We have the resources, we have the staff, we have the contractors, we're ready to go. And we've already started a lot of the prelim work to be sure that we're ready as soon as the last bell rings. And actually, one thing that I, well, I'll get back to that, because I'll finish up after John. But I'm very confident with the plan going in, that we're as prepared as we can. And we'll just keep you updated as we go through the schedule. So right now, I'd like to introduce John. He's going to talk a little bit about a couple of exciting programs that he's been working on and share with you, energy conservation.
Okay, last year, we installed demand meters here at the high school and at Saks. The demand meter looks at our usage of electric, basically between 11:30, 12 o'clock in the afternoon, till 8 o'clock at night. In the summertime, we get penalized if we use too much electricity. We installed these meters, it spreads our demand across, watches our demand, and kind of cycles equipment to keep it at a threshold where we don't get penalized and charge extra for our electric. We've been selected by Eversource, one of the only schools in the state of Connecticut, for a pilot program, where they will pay us to spread that out over a longer period of time. So an example would be if they, they look at NOAA and they say that it's going to get hot for three days, it's going to be 90 degrees, they're going to approach us and give us software where we would start the air conditioning in the middle of the night and precool the building beyond the window that we look at it. We look at it so that we don't get penalized. They're looking at it as they got to supply everybody with electric, and they can't build more power plants. Very excited program, they've offered it for us three years, they're going to pay us. Hoping to get that off the ground very soon. The second piece is the on-bill financing. Eversource is offering us $100,000 per meter of free on-bill financing. And what it basically does is gives us the opportunity to make improvements on our energy consumption. And the difference on what you save on your electric bill pays the loan back, so you really don't feel any cost to you on the operating end of it. There's a pilot program that we just did at East School, which is called Demand-Based Ventilation, which we look at the CO2 levels in the rooms and adjust the outside air dampers based on the level. It's, it's a two-piece bonus, because it improves the environment for the students and the staff. When the kids come in from recess, you could actually see it when they come into the classroom, how the CO2 level rises. On the other side of it is we're opening up the outside air dampers in the winter and in the summer. We have to heat and cool that air when we really don't have to. We can measure the CO2 and only have, only open the damper when we have to. At East School, we saved 22% on our heating costs on the first school that we did. So we're hoping to use the on-bill financing to do Saks, West, and South. And that's it. Any questions? Energy is where it's at. Cost avoidance.
Yeah, I actually have a question on the on-bill financing. So how, how soon do you start to actually get to take advantage of the, the cost savings? Because I, I mean, you know, there's going to be a couple of years where, or I don't know how long, maybe it's a few months, where the financing overtakes the savings. When do you actually start to see savings on the bill?
Well, as soon as we implement it, hopefully it'll be for this summer before the kids return to school, because we, we kind of stay kind of coasting during the summer when we don't have all that load and everybody in the school. But when the kids return from school, we'll be saving on the electric, just on the cooling alone. And then the, the other portion that we save that Eversource doesn't look at is the oil consumption. Because they don't really care about oil, they just care about the electric, the electric portion of it.
So, okay, thanks.
Once the improvements are implemented, is a commissioning process.
Correct.
Where they come in and they actually go through all of the improvements and verify that the efficiencies are at the correct levels. And then once they do that, and they have the actual cost of the improvements, they spread that over your billing cycle based on your previous consumption patterns.
Okay.
So it's, it's after the commissioning takes place, and it could be four or five years, depending on the payback and how the numbers come together.
Okay. But, but then in, in four or five years, we'll start to see...
We'll see the improvements at that point.
Yeah, but...
In terms of the reduction.
In the meantime, we don't see any net increase in the billing, so that's great.
And we have all this improvement in the quality of the experience in the classroom.
Yeah, no, that's great, that's great, okay.
And when we discussed this around budget time, we talked about it being the first stage of a multi-staged approach, I think, in the energy piece, correct? Is there...
Correct, yeah. There's other measures that, you know, the on-bill financing is not going to cover. But the on-bill financing will cover doing the demand-based ventilation at the remaining three schools, which is Saks, South, and West.
So then in our capital request for FY '19, we would look to continue this work, and so we anticipate that there'd be some financial request to continue this work in '19.
Correct. So some of it is LED lighting at the elementary schools. We haven't done any upgrading to that. The LED lighting has come a long way since we've done Saks in the high school. It has a five-touch warranty, so we don't have to replace anything for five years. And the lighting, electricity, electricity consumption will be reduced by 45%.
Great, great.
And there's an incentive through Eversource for that. The other part would be what they call retro-commissioning of the high school. Although our high school is newer, it's at the stage where it needs a checkup. Eversource will pay for that to, again, improve our energy consumption and using less power and reducing our power bills.
Great.
Any other questions for John? Hazel?
It's not a question, it's a compliment. I'm saying thank you on behalf of the taxpayers, as well as the Board of Education, for looking into all these things that help have a saving and yet still, as you say, keep the classrooms so they're top-notch and ready for education and the kids. So thank you for the time you've spent on this investigating.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Well, I think, John, I, yeah, I think John had some specific questions on the energy, because I think it looks like we have more of the presentation, is there more? Okay, so why don't we, unless it's specific to the energy management, you know, yeah.
I just have some overall questions, but specific for the energy conservation, I think it would be fabulous if we could look at involving some of our high school STEM students to like analyze the cost-benefit of these initiatives. I just think it would be such a fabulous learning opportunity for them, but also, I mean, they need those real learning opportunities, and this is...
Sure.
It'd be great to have them analyze the cost-benefit.
We were talking at some point of, all our energy management is web-based, so we can give them access to look at it. They won't be able to change any set points. But they'll be able to look at what we're using on a 90-degree day. We have like a meter that, that shows our consumption and what it's like on an overcast day. We have the forecast on the graphics. So it kind of shows you a relationship of what we use on a, on a sunny day versus overcast cooler day.
Penny?
So thank you for all these wonderful initiatives. I think cutting our demand is really key. I was, well, I get a lot of questions about it, so I'm going to pass the question on to you.
Sure.
Is where are we on solar? I know we're about to replace a lot of roofs, so it wouldn't make sense to put solar on roofs that are due to be replaced. I was just wondering if we'd analyzed it, if there was any place that made sense to do a small pilot project. I was thinking of the roof on the auxiliary gym at the high school as a possibility, because that's a relatively new roof.
I think solar is great, you just have to combine solar to wherever you're putting it. If, if it doesn't have a 25- or 30-year life expectancy, then you need to maybe replace the roof under where you're going to put the solar panels so that you never have to take them off the roof. The, the ideal thing would be that when we're ready to replace our roofs, that we incorporate solar at the same time. So you kind of set it and forget it, you put the new roof on, you put the solar panels on top, and you're good for 25 years. You don't want to have to put the solar panels on the roof and then take it off to replace the roof.
Right, that's why I just, I mean, I, it's just, I get the questions. I didn't know if you could do, if we could do a pilot project, if it would make any sense for the experience on a relatively new roof, which would be, I guess, the gym, auxiliary gym, the extra gym we added in the high school project, has a roof that's about, what, nine years old now? And I know you all have looked at it, so I'm just throwing it out as another idea to supplement possibly this wonderful work that you've been doing.
And we have, we have discussed it a bit, the, with the natural gas propane conversation. To be honest, we've really focused there and have...
That might, it's probably where the bigger savings are.
Bigger savings and more urgent.
Right.
Because that's the underground storage tanks are coming to. But yeah, we'll certainly continue that conversation. And the, the ability of the roofs to bear the weight is a part of it, you know, wind factor and all of those things. So all of that rolls into thinking about it when you do replace the roof and building to fit versus what have you, so. But yeah, it's certainly a part of the discussion, if not the centerpiece.
Yeah, and I think it's worthwhile, it's just, all the, all the research I've read on solar right now is that the, the useful life of those solar panels and the cost of them, it, it still isn't at a point where it's cost-effective to...
I think you need incentives, and I just don't know what they are.
Yeah, no, I'm not sure they're there yet, but it'd be interesting.
Just good to get the word out there, because we get a lot of questions.
Yeah, no, I agree, I agree. Okay, any more questions on the efficiency initiatives, or, okay, great.
We just had a couple of slides, just to give you an idea of what the screenshots are. And they're included in your packet, the, some of the software that John and his HVA team use to monitor, and all the different points that are monitored and the information that's compiled. And so here's the East School, another graphic, anything else to add to that, John?
No, that's the, that's the pilot program that we did at East Elementary and slown CO2 sensors.
You know what, can you come to the microphone or get a microphone, because we can't? Thank you.
That's the pilot program we did at East School, where we put CO2 sensors in all the classrooms. That's where we're saving 22% on our heating costs. And that's what we want to implement at Saks, South, and West. That's it. That's some of the energy-efficient LED lighting. Those were 1,000-watt accent lights outside the cafeteria at Saks. Then now we get the same amount of light for about 120 watts. That is the elementary school. There's two options on the LED lighting. There's option one to the left, option two is to the right. It's a kit fixture, they both would reduce the lighting cost by 45% with the five-year warranty that we never have to touch them. The manufacturer comes in, any failures, and replaces it for five years. That's a gorgeous building. It really came out good, didn't it?
It's getting there.
So the, the last part is, again, Saks Building Project. As I mentioned earlier, it's just to, just quickly talk about our move-in plan. Again, Mr. Macedo has created a very detailed, well-organized and thought-out plan, and we're just looking to enhance it. And again, coordinating with the building committee and ONG, who's been very good to work with, down to the details of when the final cleaning is going to be done. And systems are commissioned, we've been involved in the discussions. So a lot of questions that John has for all the new systems are how the new addition connects into our existing systems to make sure that they're very efficient. And they're going to be operating as designed, and they have an engineering firm with that. So we, you know, we try to do all this proactively. So once we're moved in and all the furniture's in and the students are in there, we know that the systems are just going to work as designed, at least as much as we can tell in the summertime, of course. So all that coordination, again, is just to be able to make sure that the first, actually, the half-day on the 21st, that's when we're starting to move out the music rooms and the art rooms, the teachers have boxes, the packing is started. And we're also trying to work with the architect and the furniture, the FFNE department, to make sure that our furniture possibly could, some of it can be shipped early, so that we get shelving units and things for the storage rooms, that just to try to minimize the amount of double moves. So for example, for the art rooms, the best scenario would be to move them out of the art rooms directly into the new space. And we're coordinating with ONG, and the Fire Marshal in town has been very good with us, working with, well. So it's a very good team effort to try to make it as efficient as possible. Because here we are in May, and we're saying we're moving next month. It's just, when you say it that way, you know, the urgency is there. But I think we have a very good plan, well-thought-out, to address it in many ways, as well as to try to make it as efficient as possible for ONG to go back into the music and art rooms existing and do all the light renovation and work that needs to be done so that those spaces could be occupied for September as well. So it's been a very good process, it's a very good team effort, and I think it's going to result in some very positive outcomes as well, so. So that ends our presentation for tonight. Were there any questions? Having none, I'd be happy to hear any questions.
I'd like to start by, this is your first official meeting with the Board of Education, so welcome. We're thrilled to have you here, and there's lots of work ahead, so as this packet identifies. So thank you again, we're looking forward to working with you. And I'll open up to questions, Sherry.
So it's fair to say that you hit the ground running. So thank you for this, and the pictures are very helpful. Can you just start by, on the 2017 piece, just give us a perspective on, are you happy with the progress? There's 13 open projects, will they all be completed? Will they all be completed in the timeframe that was originally designated? Are we on budget for all of those projects? Kind of just giving us that sort of perspective on the 2017 projects.
Well, some of them are, I think I mentioned during the proposal, some of them are ongoing just because of access, painting and so forth. Some are ongoing because of the sheer scope and the volume with some of the masonry repairs, and not that there's a tremendous amount of repairs that are outstanding, but it's just an ongoing look, and you always make sure that what you've done the previous year is holding up, and if there's anything new. Sidewalks, a lot of that is just ongoing because it's sidewalks and we use salt, and we try to use the safe salt and so forth, but the weather conditions, cracking, freezing. So to answer your question, I do feel very confident we have a good plan, and our goal really is to complete as many, if not all, of these projects in '17. But realistically speaking, sometimes you just can't help that because of the nature of the work. So that's kind of a general answer, but we would like to clean up some of the older projects and get them finished up and put away. So, and that's why we try to explain exactly what they are and, you know, again, why some of them aren't necessarily just done in one year. Matter of fact, for the 2018, again, a lot of them we tried to do and access the space that we can during the summer, but many of them will continue on through the course of the school year, so.
And then for 2018, can you just clarify on the Saks playground? I just want to make sure we're clearly communicating expectations because there's pictures that say Saks Playground replacement. So can you clarify, like, which equipment will be replaced? Because I don't think it's the entire playground, just so everyone's clear on what's happening.
Well, as I understand, the scope of this is that the main intent is to really put in age-appropriate equipment. And so we're working with a manufacturer to comment, but I believe we also have a committee that will provide input as well to make sure that we do hear from all interested parties and we do select the proper equipment and the size of the space itself if that needs to change, so.
Great, so we're pulling together some faculty members, a parent, and certainly a consultant who's done work with us before at the other playgrounds to come up with a design, bring it before that committee, hear some feedback. I remember over at East, South and West, some of the staff members had some important feedback to share and some insight into some equipment that would work for all students. So I think their feedback's important for us to get to. So once we have a design to put before them, we'll allow, we'll have the committee take a look, hear some feedback and try to design it. So we don't know exactly what it's going to be yet, but I think that group will help, and we have a consultant who's working to sort of put an initial plan together as well. As Dan said, it is part of, part of the focus is age-appropriate. The, one thing that's wrong with the picture that we had here is that there wasn't a child on the playground, because at every lunch period, we have 330 to 360 students out there running around, playing, jumping, and that's where we really, we want to maximize the equipment that we have wherever we can and add in things that the students will want to use, and that's going to be the focus we use. And we are, it's tight. You know, the timeline is very tight because of, one of the reasons we are where we are is the, because this project was being bonded, instead of generally, in the past, the budget was approved at the beginning of April when all of the budgets were approved, but because of the way this was being financed, we couldn't move on it until the bonding approval was received just a couple of weeks ago. So that put us a little bit behind in our timing compared to past projects where, when the budget was approved, it was done. So we're scrambling now to get up, to gear up so we can have this done hopefully this summer.
Penny?
On the high school library, I was just wondering what process we were using to select the carpet. I know that there are a lot of new materials and choices out there since that was done and that that's a challenging space.
Well, I believe it'll be another committee to help with the selection of that as well. You're right, all the different fabrics. You know, throughout, really, the common thread that goes through every project that we have, whether it's energy conservation, masonry, sinks, you know, the foundation of facilities management is safety. And when we look at carpet, again, I'm not the person to pick out the pattern and the colors, but what I do look at the materials. So the best carpets that you can buy, especially floor tile, have a rubber bottom on it so that nothing, a liquid can't be spilled and go through the fabric, and then it ends up between the carpet and the floor, and then you have things that grow that are undesirable. So that's what I look for. I look for the rubber backing, and you'll see that. And you also look for a loop instead of a straight cut. So it gives us wear and tear, a consistent wear pattern so that we don't have, well, I may be dating myself in the days of shag carpeting where it became trip hazards, things like that. So that's the standard we have, and that's really what's highly recommended for schools. So then it just turns into, what do we want it to look like? What are the colors and what's the design? So, but those are the two most important factors in terms of wearability and safety.
Right, and I think they are. I think they're new products. And just on the design, I think that's a challenging space, so I encourage you to work with a consultant.
And we are, and I have several boxes of samples for when we're ready to begin that process, so.
Terrific.
Anyone else? Questions? Comments? I had a couple of questions. The first being, so I'm hoping you've had a chance to look at, we had a, I can't even remember how many years now ago, the extensive facilities review that was done.
About three.
Three years ago. So do you have an opinion about how long we should go as a district before we do that process again? Because we're kind of working off of, you know, a few-year-old data, and we did a nice five-year, 10-year plan based on that, that we use to kind of present our capital budget and our operating budget to the town. But, you know, over time, things change, and so how frequently would you recommend an exhaustive facilities review like that be undertaken?
Well, I have read the Silver Petcha Charter report. I think it's a great idea that the district decided to do that and really catalog all the deficiencies and code issues and just things that are wearing. And a lot of it's driven by what's found in that initial report, and as Penny said, you know, the roofs are, they're going to need some TLC. So I think that, and that, and some of the equipment in the mechanical rooms are aging out, and John has a great plan addressing that. So I think that, you know, looking at the building infrastructure, I think that that's probably the more pressing issue, and again, we're looking at some masonry items and the roofs, and we're keeping a pretty close eye on those. So, again, that's just where I'm at right now, as I continue to digest it and as I continue to learn and hear more from John about the priorities. So to answer your question, I would say five years. I would say because of what I've discovered, discovered or read and absorbed, that it'd probably be a good time to do review and just check to see where we are with some of the improvements that we're making. We're addressing a lot of these issues. I think there's a very good capital plan that was created to address the urgencies of the situation. And so I would say, just speaking here right now, that probably five years would be a good timeframe to...
That's helpful, because it's just, it's an expensive process and so for budgeting and looking ahead, I think it's a good thing to keep...
And it could be even portioned off. It could be just targeted, some certain areas that you're more concerned about than others, that you could just do a quick review and sort of a check set of where we're at with that.
All right, thank you. And then with this room, are you also going to be using floor tiles?
I would recommend that, yes, yeah.
Yeah, because I see, you know, it's like, sometimes you're looking, you think it looks great, and then you're like, you look over in that corner, and you're like, wow, that's a big, that's a big little...
Yes.
I was like, right as we're walking in, you know, the first view is that nice big hole in the carpeting.
And typically, projects this size have always tried to purchase 5% or 10% overstock.
Right.
And even if you do have that and you bring a tile out, the carpet fades. So sometimes then you just go to a corner and take a tile out of the carpet and replace it there and use the new one in the corner, so.
Okay.
You know, there's little tricks like that, but so many times, unfortunately, you buy a carpet and a year later, the product line isn't manufactured anymore, and then you're stuck. So it's always good to get the extra. And for a place like this, a multi-use room, it's a great idea to stick with tile.
Yeah, no, I think that's great. And then my last question has to do with the domestic hot water at East and West. So I'm not exactly sure where we are and what the exact route that the town is exploring with Eversource for natural gas. But if we have these new domestic hot water heaters that are on propane, could, if down the road there is natural gas available to either of those schools, would there be the option to transition over to natural gas?
We selected...
Could you come to the...
When we did the first two schools, the equipment that we selected was, they're convertible for a minimal amount of fee. It's an orifice change in the burner, so we can convert them from propane to natural gas.
Great.
That's great.
That's great. Thank you very much. Okay, any other questions? Thank you. It's a pleasure to have you here.
Thank you. I'm very happy to be here and looking forward to working with you and having a very successful summer project season. And there's our moving plan that is a symbol of some of the moods and the priority that we're working on with ONG. We're very excited about all this work, and thank you for the opportunity to be part of the team.
Okay, thank you, Dan.
I just wanted to say that Dan has really jumped into the Saks Middle School project, and that's been a big help, and John has done a huge amount of work on that as well, and it's been a very good integrated effort, and I appreciate all the attention and your coming to the early meetings, maybe they're late for you because I know you get here early, but thank you for all you're doing for that project.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, the next item on our agenda is the communications subcommittee update with Ms. West.
Great. So we just wanted to provide the board with a quick update from the Communications Committee, which is comprised of Ms. Notton, Ms. Richardson and myself. Since our last update, we've primarily been focused on the budget communications to ensure that all stakeholders stay informed and have access to up-to-date information throughout the budget process. As part of this, our new communications manager, Mr. Mike Horzon, stepped up in a big way, assuming responsibility and leadership for the website updates and the budget quick notes, which are posted in a timely manner within 24 hours of each budget meeting. We also conducted a focus group with the PTC presidents and BOE reps to answer their budget questions and to solicit input on how our new communications manager can help facilitate communications. And out of this meeting came the suggestion that Mr. Horzon has acted on to write up a bi-weekly summary of our Board of Ed meetings to be relayed through the PTC and PFA newsletters, which is the primary source of information for our parents. We, as a committee, also monitor all sorts of different communications, whether it be newspaper or social media, to ensure that there's an accurate information cycle present and that there's an inclusion of positive news stories from the district. And as always, we welcome all feedback and questions from the public, and you can contact any of us or our committee.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for Mrs. West?
I would just like to commend Sherri and the committee for the great work that they continue to do. I know that your vigilance in the communications that are out there and helping us to be sure that, you know, accurate information goes out has been very helpful. And I know that, I met with the PTC, PFA presidents this morning, and they were commenting again on the communication and how nice it is to have the Board of Education Communications Committee to help them in their work as well, so communicating things out. So just to say, thank you for the ongoing great work. Communications is one of those things that, in the heat of the moment or as things are happening, it's sometimes we don't think about that. We're making decisions, and the Communications Committee and certainly Mike as our Communications Director have really helped, I think, our whole district to be sure that we're getting the word out and letting people know what's happening, so thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to echo Dr. Letzzi's compliments because, you know, I think we all know in this 24/7 information and news cycle that we're constantly in, the importance of this committee is, you know, just highlighted, you know, every week. So thank you, and thank you, Mr. Horzon, so. All right, next item is our statement of accounts with Dr. Keating.
So I just wanted to start by mentioning that at our last meeting, last time I presented the statement of accounts, I had mentioned that we might have some transfers on this report this month. However, when we met with Ed Resources this past Friday morning, we had a conversation about the budget cut for next year, about a half a million dollars in budget cut, and the opportunity that we may have within this current year's budget to accelerate some of the one-time expenditures for equipment and some of the maintenance projects that we discussed. So as a committee, we decided that we would hold off one more month while, when we had more current information, to put transfers before the board, so you're not seeing those in this report tonight. With that said, 75% of the budget has actually been expended and paid. 22% is encumbered, and we have a balance of 2.6% remaining in our accounts. We continue to monitor the special education expenditures and our unforeseen repairs to the facilities, which do occur from time to time, and we have had a few new items in the last month since the budget, since the report was previously presented. So we'll continue to monitor those expenditures. On the positive side, we do continue to run favorably in a few of the variable accounts such as teacher substitutes. So nothing much has really changed, I guess, other than those few items since last month, and we will update you next month with transfers.
Thank you, Dr. Keating. Does anyone have any questions or comments? Yeah, it's just, it's such a great process, so thank you for, you know, early mornings and, you know, whatever, but it's really helpful, so I appreciate it. Okay, moving on to the consent agenda. May I have a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda? Penny, second. Sherri? All those in favor? Any opposed? Okay, it's unanimous. Comments from the public? Seeing none, we'll move on to announcements and future business with Dr. Letzzi.
Sure. The first meeting in June, traditionally, we have our award ceremony for our Cabe Student Award winners, which is always a highlight of the year, certainly. And we also have an opportunity to celebrate our retiring teachers. And as we've said this year, we have five retiring teachers and one administrator will be with us that evening. We also will have an update about our senior internship. As you may or may not know, tomorrow's the first official day of the senior internship program. Today, they had a workshop presentation in the auditorium, learning about a variety of different things. Tomorrow, they begin, so they'll be onsite. I'll have my three interns at 9:00 tomorrow morning, so it feels great to actually create lesson plans again. It's been a long time. So we will be, I'll be working with them, and Mike Horzon, I know, has another one over at Central Office as well that he'll be working with. We'll be talking, doing different projects, but all in all, there's around 275 senior interns. I may be off by a student or two who are going out beginning tomorrow, and it's really just an amazing effort, and so proud of all of our seniors for getting to this part, this point of their development in school and being able to do something a little bit different, you know, for the remaining few weeks. So we're very proud of them, and we'll have an update on sort of the ins and outs of that at our next board meeting. Sue Carroll will be joined by Heather, who is our coordinator of the program, has been working with Sue this year, because as you can imagine, as this program has expanded, we've needed to support it, and that's actually been one of the Board of Education goals as well, to meet the needs of the growing program. So they'll share a little bit of, some details about what's happening there. We'll have committee updates from the remainder of the board committees here. And there you have it. It'll be, should be a very interesting night where we'll learn a lot about what's going on with our seniors, and we have an opportunity to celebrate the teachers and administrator who've done so much for the district through the years.
Thank you. All right, so that's the end of our agenda. If I could get a motion to adjourn. Penny, second. Hazel? All those in favor? It's unanimous. Meeting adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.